Good evening, everyone. The October 2021 Brookhaven Borough Council meeting will now come to order. Please rise and clench your fists.
The pledge is to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Madam Mayor.
Good evening. Our deceased residents for the month of September 2021: Robert Crowe, Justin Dolber, Dr. Henry Hilbrand from Brookhaven Orthodontics, Ron Pizotsky, and Carmen Concepcion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Wilbert, who's in the roll call here.
Mr. Heller.
President.
Mrs. Boots.
Here.
Mrs. Heller.
President.
Mayor Leslie.
President.
Mr. Vasquez.
Here.
Mrs. Oates.
Here.
Mr. Patis.
Here.
Mr. Gilroy.
Here.
Mr. Wills.
Here.
Mr. Catania.
Here.
Mr. Wilbert, I'm here. Mr. Foyle.
Here.
Chief Montella is not here. Chief Weiss.
Here.
That completes the roll.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Leslie and I have two Eagle Scout Awards to present. Do we have the Lloyd and Klein families present? Round through here. All right, come on up, folks.
Yes.
And Elodie too. Get up, yeah.
What do you use, Craig? All right, Craig, move it first, Hillary, sorry. You all ready? Families ready or not, we're here.
I just had to have my Boy Scout word.
Whereas Craig Richard Klein is the son of Gary and Susan Klein, 1790 Hillcrest Lane, Aston, Pennsylvania; and whereas Craig Richard Klein was a member of Boy Scout Troop 493 and has earned his Eagle Scout Award, which is the highest award given to a youth member of the Boy Scouts of America; and whereas Craig Richard Klein's Eagle Scout project included building ten dog beds and painting various buildings at the Green Ward Farm Animal Rescue in West Grove, PA, which is a nonprofit, no-kill shelter, and collected cleaning products, dog food, toys and supplies for the rescue; and whereas Craig Richard Klein obtained all his required Eagle Scout merit badges and many others by going to merit badge college programs locally in Maryland, Delaware, and also by going to the Boy Scout camp. Now therefore, we have resolved that Brookhaven Borough Council, Mayor Leslie along with his parents, Gary and Suzanne Klein, his sister Jocelyn, and his brother Kyle, and other relatives and friends hereby congratulate and honor Craig Richard Klein for earning the Eagle Scout Award and extend best wishes to him in his future endeavors. Resolved this fourth day of October 2021.
And now we have Gabriel Lloyd, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, Resolution 2021, a resolution of Brookhaven Borough Council, Delaware County, Pennsylvania honoring Gabriel Lloyd for earning the Boy Scouts of America Eagle Scout Award. Whereas Gabriel Lloyd is the son of Edward and Anna Lloyd at 3433 Nathan Avenue, Brookhaven, PA 19015. And whereas Gabriel Lloyd was a member of the Boy Scout Troop 493 and has earned his Eagle Scout Award, which is the highest award given to the youth member of the Boy Scouts of America. And whereas Gabriel Lloyd's high regard for the military and love of fly fishing, he chose for his Eagle Scout project the Project Healing Water Fly Fishing PHWFF, which is an organization dedicated to rehabilitation of disabled active military personnel and disabled veterans through fly fishing and associated activities, including education and counseling. Whereas Gabriel Lloyd designed and built a storage cabinet for the West Bradford, PA PHWFF healing chapter. Now therefore, be it resolved that Brookhaven Borough Council, Mayor Leslie, along with his parents Edward and Anna Lloyd and other relatives and friends hereby congratulate and honor Gabriel Lloyd for earning the Eagle Scout Award and extend best wishes to him in his future endeavors. Resolved this fourth day of October 2021. Signed by Brookhaven Borough Council, President Heller and myself. Congratulations.
When anybody says anything, I know I'm blocking his face.
It looks like you're putting it in a waste.
Good evening.
Good evening. Great to be back. Thanks for welcoming us again. Welcome back to school. We have September 7th, Curbin Elementary opened the doors. So welcome back students and staff. Five days of in-person instruction. It's been a terrific start to the 2122 school year thanks to the Curbin Elementary families, the community, and of course, all support of Brookhaven Borough Council. I cannot thank you enough for all the work for our school during the environmental disaster that took place at the end of our school year. And you know, we're all still talking about what an amazing day that was for our kids, and we absolutely did not have done that without all of your support. So thank you again from the bottom of my heart from all of our Curbin families. Our virtual back-to-school night went very well. And we had, that was on September 13th, and we hosted a well-attended back-to-school night. Parents had an opportunity to be kind of greeted with teachers, school programs, and expectations through live sessions with the teachers. The school continues to follow the Pennsylvania Department of Health guidelines to ensure the health and safety of all students and staff. And again, I'd like to thank our families for the continued support of all that you are doing in our schools and helping us out with all these recommendations that the State Department has required of us. September 22nd, Curbin Elementary staff and students had a blast at Family Day, Brookhaven Family Day. And again, thank you to Brookhaven Borough Council for hosting such a wonderful event for our community. It's always an honor to participate in a day that brings our families and the community together. We snapped a lot of photos. So if you're interested in some of our photos, check out our PBSC Facebook page. We also celebrated International Dot Day, one of our school celebrations that we do each year on September 13th. Curbin students take part in International Dot Day with a reading of the dot, which encourages our students to harness their creativity, embrace challenge, and confidence as they make their mark on the world. We also celebrated International Peace Day with Pin Wheels for Peace. And once again, for Pin Wheels for Peace, students created pinwheels and planted them. They were messages of calm and serenity on our pinwheels. Now we plant them outside the school again in honor of International Peace Day. In October, we have a lot planned. And we're looking forward to a busy month. I'd also like to thank the Brookhaven LALA for honoring our staff this month. They brought a lot of fun treats for our staff. And this is really nice for, again, another local outreach. And you know, LALA honored our teachers. They brought coffee, donuts, you know, fun little prizes and some gift certificates. And also, thank you Mayor Leslie for the gift certificates you just handed me from John's. And we will certainly be using those and hand them out to our students throughout the year. And we're also looking forward to a lot of fun events this month coming out that will involve the school and of course, the community and some ACL events. And once again, if you're interested in seeing what happens daily, follow us on Twitter at CurbinYes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. This is the first public discussion session. Is there anyone here for a public discussion? No one for public discussion? First public discussion session is closed. Chief Montella is at Hazmat Spill in Chester Township. He gives his chief vice. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Good evening, Chief. For the month of September, the Brookhaven Police Department initiated a total of 867 cat assignments to the dog com. Just a few of the noteworthy incidents would be fifteen thefts, three assaults, two vandalism or criminal mischief, ten fraud, three DUIs, one narcotics investigation, fifteen animal complaints, fifty-seven suspicious conditions or harassment complaints, twenty-eight domestic disturbances, fifty-nine medical assists, five mental health responses, forty-six assist other departments, sixteen alarms, twenty-six vehicle crashes, and thirty-nine hazardous conditions for a fire report. Our total loss to victims amounts to $43,104. Recovered was $15,962. A little bit about that. Our recovery amount is probably a bit more than that in light of our investigation that is unfolding. We had forty-two adult arrests for the month, one juvenile arrest. Officers issued 152 citations, fifteen parking violations, thirty-three warnings. I'd like to commend all the officers that were involved in the driveway paving scam that we obviously have heard a lot about in our borough as well as in the surrounding areas. Specifically, I'd like to thank Officer Eastman and Sergeant Hackett from Delaware County CIP. This investigation was ongoing and extremely labor-intensive. Still going on, so I'm staying here tonight. Many interviews and follows that we've conducted, and additional charges have now been filed. Several search warrants that we've conducted, and I can say we're happy, very happy with the results. There's still more work to be done, but we intend to follow and receive. I can tell you this time, additional felony charges have been filed for the original male that was taken into custody. And felony arrest warrants have also been filed for four additional and also three violent police incidents. We also had a large theft from the Lowe's store. I'm happy to report that there were two people that have been arrested and charged for those thefts. The responsible for additional thefts at our Lowe's store as well as others in Montgomery County, those agencies have now filed charges on them as well. Thanks to the networking that was done. Officer Martin led that investigation and networked these other law enforcement agencies. So I just found out tonight, Parkford Township is now filing charges as well, so I applaud him for that. Couple other things. We assisted the Department of Health in Health Promotion Council with their tobacco compliance campaign. And as a result of that, they issued five citations for violations of selling tobacco and products to underage individuals. Over the course of the month, I received a letter for, I have a woman wrote a letter for Officer Martin that wanted to thank him for his compassion and caring nature while dealing with her son who had been involved in a vehicle crash. There was another one that came to the police station because she wanted to let me know how kind and polite Officer Martin was during a traffic stop. She said, "In the way the world is right now," she thought that it was her job to come in and let me know what a great job and how compassionate he was. So I thank him for that. I also received words of praise for Officer Wetton. Officer Volker was here tonight. They were involved with the dog incident. They got stuck under the car. It was a pretty traumatic experience for many. So I applaud them for what they have done. And again, these are just a few examples of the incredible work being done by our officers. They are dedicated and always willing to go the extra mile. And I personally want to thank them for what they do. This month has been extremely busy for us, and I greatly appreciate all the hard work from each and every one of them. As far as August, there were no issues with COVID and mitigation efforts are still in effect. Training for the month. We attended training with Alex Mann. For anyone that doesn't know, Alex is a young man that suffers from autism. He travels to police departments to show support and provide training to officers about autism and how to interact with those with autism. We also provided an escort to the borough for Alex, which was very well received. And I appreciate all the other agencies surrounding us that participated in that. Detective Patrick attended instructor training for OC, baton, handcuffing, and tactics this month. That now gives us an in-house instructor for our department that will help us to be able to meet our yearly required training. That's a significant cost savings for us to have an in-house trainer. So I'm very happy to report that. Officer Roller also attended training in State Road at Field Sobriety Testing. And all officers of the department have now attended training for less than equal shotgun. As far as the community, we attended the 911 Memorial this month as well as the borough's 911 Memorial. I attended State Representative Van Kruger's senior breakfast here at the borough. Just a couple other things I just want to remind again, remind all the residents with school being back in session, to be aware of the school buses picking up and letting on children. We're really asking people. And I said this last month and saying it again, just please be mindful of the buses when they're stopped. Also, as far as the, at the dogs, we spoke about the dogs. Please call 911 if your dog gets out and let us know. There is a significant fee to the borough and we have to turn it over to the SPCA. Lastly, I just encourage everybody to follow us on Facebook. I'm sure everybody's seen, trying to get things out there and you already know what's going on. One of the exciting things, the police department will be participating in No Shave November next month. We formed a committee and we're working on finalizing the details, but what I can tell you is that we will be raising money for Hope for Haley. That was decided by committee. For anyone that doesn't know, the mission of Hope for Haley is to promote the knowledge of awareness. Hope for Haley is achieving this mission through awareness, support, and education. We have many things planned to raise money for this important cause. We hope that everyone will support us. So stay tuned. It's the end of my report.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Wills with the Borough Solicitor Report.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen. A copy of this Solicitor's Report is on file with the Borough Secretary's office. I have no action items for Borough Council's consideration this evening, but Will mentioned a few areas that my office has been involved with over the past month. Number one concerns the Brookhaven Self-Storage Land Development Project that is off of Brookhaven Road. The planning commission met on September 21st at that meeting to review the revised land development plans specifically as it relates to the proposed height of this particular facility. The borough engineer is now in the process of reviewing some revised math calculations that were offered by the developer as to the height of this particular facility. The planning commission will conduct further review of this land development plan at its upcoming meeting on October 19th. The public is welcome and invited to attend. At the last meeting, Councilman Patterson, the Borough Secretary, Wilber, were also in attendance. Second item concerns the Popeyes Land Development Project that was recently approved by Borough Council at its September 13th meeting, approving a drive-through Popeyes fast food restaurant at 4236 Edmond Avenue. My office is presently in the process of drafting a development agreement, a public improvement security agreement, an agreement for escrow and payment of professional fees, as well as a stormwater management, operations, maintenance, and inspection agreement. And I expect to get those out to the developer for his review as early as tomorrow. Third issue that I brought to Council's attention earlier this month concerns some recent amendments to the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act that now requires boroughs to make available in advance to the public the proposed agenda for any governmental meeting. And again, those agendas should be published on the borough's website at least 24 hours prior to a meeting. And again, the physical location of the meeting as well as the principal office of the borough should also be publicizing and placing those notices at least 24 hours in advance on the front door of the municipal building. Also, with regard to the Civil Service Commission, I have been working hand-in-hand with the Civil Service Solicitor over the past several weeks. I'm pleased to advise that the borough will be testing for the position of full-time patrol officer here in the borough. A proposed schedule has been enacted by the Civil Service Commission, and the mayor in her report will no doubt touch on that proposed schedule. And finally, ladies and gentlemen, the Borough's Waste Water Treatment Plant has a current contract with Miller Environmental, which is the contractor that provides plant operation and maintenance services to the borough inserting the Borough's Waste Water Treatment Plant. That contract was scheduled to terminate on December 31st of this year. I sent out an official termination notice to the contractor, so he is aware of that. The borough engineer is in the process of rebidding out that contract for an additional term. And I suspect our present contractor in Miller Environmental, Inc. will also be submitting a competitive bid to retain that particular contract. It's my understanding that they have done a good job in their services in the past. And other than that, I can report general progress to Borough Council as well as the public.
Thank you, sir. Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. Just a couple announcements. We will be holding our Veterans Day service Saturday, November 6th at 10:00 a.m. Again, many thanks to Chief Weiss and all of our officers for their outstanding work these past few weeks. They have been super duper busy and getting the big guys off the street. So thank you and, you know, keep up the good work. Civil Service. We'll be issuing the test for hiring a full-time officer in our borough. Applications can be picked up in our borough's front office starting Tuesday, October 5th. And the deadline to turn it in is Wednesday, October 27th at 4:30 p.m. And that also has to come back to the borough office. It does not go to the chief's office. Again, I want to congratulate the Eagle Scouts from tonight on their accomplishment. And last, I want to wish Janice Swift a happy birthday. Today's Janice's birthday.
I'm trying to buy a cake, but she shot the spending.
Happy 30th birthday.
Gives us the council reports. I have a few items. First, I want to thank Charles Allen from Bateman Allen Funeral Room. He and yours truly chipped in and bought a, what size TV? Fifteen? Fifteen-inch TV for real church. They won the grand prize at Bingo Family Day, but they lost the coin flip to a tie. So Charles and I wanted to stay on that right side of God, so we chipped in and bought the TV. I posted today on Facebook, I know there was widespread Facebook outage for eight hours today, which basically ended the way the entire world functions apparently. But you should have seen it when Facebook came back around 5:30. The vaccination clinic scheduling apps are up. The first day is next Tuesday, 11:00 a.m., 7:00 p.m. That's October 12th. And the following three Wednesdays after that. So that would be the 20th, 27th, and November 3rd, 11:00 and 7:00. And there will be more clinics as demand, if the demand is there. It's Pfizer only for first dose, second dose, and the booster shot. And last, I want to thank, I want to thank attendees and those that entered cars into the space Hometown Hero Banner Auto Show. It raised, I believe, $1,500 or $1,600 for the program. Thank you to the Delco Cruisers and Sean McKenna for all the great work they did. It was a wonderful event. Completely drama-free too, doesn't work. Last, we have a, the bucket truck is finally coming in after months of delay. We are receiving it Thursday. So once the Public Works staff is up to speed on it, we'll be able to get some of the 35 down banners up and five new banners that trail the other rents. And that's good news. That's fine. That's all I have for now. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Wilber reminded me. I forget it almost every time. I need two motions. First, motion to approve September 13th, 2021 council meeting.
Sure. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Motion to approve September 27th, 2021 council workshop.
Right motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Sorry about that. Thank you, Mr. Wilber. Ms. Wiki, happy birthday.
Thank you. I do have bills that must pay this month and the general fund, $78,196 in my excess. I'm certified in $77,455.17 for trouble this month of $155,655.17. So I want to make a motion so we can pay those bills.
We have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Any opposed or any questions? Motion carries.
Thank you. The other thing I want to mention, I turned it over to council to remite the preliminary budget for all the budgets. So we're going to review this in the next couple, all of these actions. Next meeting, the workshop, we'll be doing the first reading of the general fund. November's council meeting will be basically the list of the funds. And then the 22nd, November, which is the workshop, we'll be reading the general fund adios again. Adoption is scheduled for December 6th. Now, the only question I did have, Mr. Wills, was I see on the report, do we have an escort release for pipeline?
That will be deferred until that's on to me.
I just wanted to make sure that we had any.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I have nothing to add. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wiki. Mrs. Boots.
Thank you, Mr. President. The ordinance committee is scheduled to meet October 21st at 6:30, yes, 6:00 p.m. As promised, during the September workshop of Providence Animal Centers to Vaccination Clinic at 27th Pec's, it is a clinic. So I was hoping that number would go a little bit up, and I guess just because of the whole climate now stuff. November 13th is our spread and electronics event from 9:00 a.m. until noon at Curbin Elementary School parking lot. Please remember, break with a residency when you come. Thank you. So I have some record news. I would like to make a motion to appoint Pat Wheatack as a full member of the Recreation Board.
We have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any questions? Unopposed? Motion carries. Welcome, Pat.
Thank you. Also, this Friday is our Fall Dinner Dance from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. here at Borough Hall Gym. The event is up EYOB and includes food and entertainment from the Dale and McGuire Arena. Tickets are $15 each or $25 a couple. And ticket sales will be tonight through Thursday night from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. There will be a limited amount of tickets sold at the door, so please don't try to exit the door if you can avoid it. The 17th Annual Golf Tournament.
So glad you have us here, remind.
Thank you. We're signing up any office student we're in the day from 11:01.
They're worth everything.
From 9:04.
From 9:04. Thank you. The 17th Annual Golf Tournament will be on Sunday, October 17th at Ed Oliver Golf Club in Wilmington, Delaware. The registration form is on the website and our social media page. If you would like to sponsor a hole, that form is also posted on our website.
What is that?
Social media pages.
Seventeen.
There were seventeen. Mimi McGovern and I had a Zoom meeting last week with Corus Vector, who is the editor that we use for our website. We are again restructuring our website, and it's going to look very, very different. We're going to be meeting with them this week to start moving things into the designated area. So we'll let everybody know when that website is up and running. It's going to be much easier to find things. We're going to have a lot more people, but you can click. The colors are much brighter, so I'm really proud of it. That's my report.
Fantastic. Mr. Vasquez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Want to apologize for my absence at the last council meeting at a work commitment at a, attend for the September monthly report for Public Works. For the September monthly report for Public Works, as Mr. Heller said, the seventh, we should be receiving our bucket truck. Finally, it's only a couple months overdue. We hopefully have our training start that day as well and get everything up and running. As for the sanitary sewer systems, the four sewer backups, two calls, two, or two calls, forty-one seventeen Edmond Ave. The Beer Barn is a business issue. We are clearing the street. Thirty-five twenty-five Switford Lane issues with the home owner as well. Thirty-four twenty-four Victor. There are two issues, one with the homeowner and one with the break in the street. Mr. Grant and Tanyan were both notified and we will work on correcting those issues as we speak. One section of sanitary sewer mains cleared out. Our year-to-date total is eighty-four sewer main sections on thirty different streets. There's a sinkhole in front of forty-eight oh six and forty-eight ten Shepherd at the storm drain inlet. Mr. Tanyan was notified about that. There's another one that's been reported at thirty-seven thirty-four Dobbie Lane. We have to schedule a, to video that, that line right there. There was dirt waste in the holes at this time. We have to clean them out and then get the camera in there to find out what's going on. Down to the parks. The replacement bridge from the vandalized playground equipment at Samson has been ordered, hopefully arising in ten to twelve weeks, and then we'll get that installed to replace that piece. The overgrown brush has been trimmed back at Scott Park. Hanging branches, the overgrowth has been removed from Summerville Park. Handships are added to the plaza. We know a great rank about the overhead wires at Samson. The age of the wires could be an issue. We're having the outlet breaker consistently tripping. Working on that, working on that issue as well. And then just some general things. Second week of the fourth quarter shipping has started. Week one resulted in thirty-six thousand seventeen yards. Installed a watch children sign on Chandler, Chandler, Chandler Drive. The downed tree behind forty, forty, uh, four hundred seventeen Cadillac has been recorded. The tree itself is actually on the homeowner's property. It's not a thorough responsibility. Oddholes, seventeen bags were used totaling eight hundred and fifty pounds of cold patch. Year-to-date, eighty-six bags used, four thousand three hundred twelve pounds cold patches here. If you see any oddholes in the street, feel free to call the borough, and we'll go out there and roll and patch them up. M-two completed installation of additional camera at the, at the garage. P-eight long call tickets, thirty-four for the month of September. Our year-to-date is three hundred and fifty-eight. Preparing the, the Public Works team is preparing the equipment for the twenty-twenty-one leave program. We're using Linvilla again to collect our leaves instead of the waste station. Recycling bins have been given out, ten to the Borough Hall and three to residents. Do you need an extra one or have any issues with yours being damaged? All the hall will issue another one. No accidents or injuries reported in the month of September, and that is all I have for Public Works. As for zoning, I have no news, no new news to report, and that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, I, I have one action item. I'd like to make a motion to approve parkside is stored salt at our salt storage area.
As we do every year, we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, sir. And that's all I have.
Mr. Pat, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Real simple. The Workplace Safety Meeting was held on the twenty-eighth of September last month. There was no accidents to the borough vehicles, nor was there any personal injuries from employees. That's the standard requirement.
Thank you, sir. Sorry for your loss, Mr. Pat.
Oh, thank you.
Mr. President, one more thing.
I forgot that. You answer.
I just wanted to thank our seasonal employees, Larry, who will be coming up the Friday this week, will be your last day. We are going to advertise to welcome all the, to have our next group of seasonal employees come on. Those who've been seasonal with us now are more than welcome to apply again. We're looking for possibly two to three to hire for this leaf collection season coming up.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gilmore?
Hey, Mr. President. Just wanted to remind everyone about bulk trash for the next two weeks. We bill bulk trash. We plan a marble, it's trying to be out, and we create delay, so trash probably has to us to hold on mobile trash for the next two weeks. I want to congratulate the Police Department for the driveway game and the Lowe's. It's quite commendable. It seems like every month we're honoring or celebrating the accomplishments of a different officer, and it really goes to show the well-roundness of our department, and I really appreciate the great work you guys really have to do.
And I want to say, you know, touching on family, it's Family Day, and that's something very important to me, and I'm very thankful for all the volunteers and all the hard work, a lot of people, a lot of sweat, and a lot of hard work from the top guys all the way down to every child at every high schooler who was volunteering at the party. So it was really a great year, a great year at all these times, and I really appreciate it.
And then we begin with my report. Thank you, sir. Mrs. Heller, I skipped you in Berkeley, so we'll save the best talent for last.
Thank you, company. The parade committee sponsored back-to-school night dance this past Friday. The music was provided by DJ T-Z. We had over forty, fourth, fifth, sixth graders. That was a real community. We, all the money that we raised was back to the parade committee. The next committee meeting for the parade will be this Wednesday, ten-six, at seven thirty p.m. in this, in this room. Town watch, the annual arts craft fair is scheduled for Saturday, November the twenty-seventh, from nine to three in the gym, so please come out. It's great fun, and there's so many new things to buy. Technology meeting is scheduled to Thursday, October fourteenth. That's at seven o'clock in this building as well. And just to touch on a little bit more of the record, we did have a meeting this past Thursday, nine-thirty. We did discuss the actionable items from Family Day. The only actionable item that came up was that there was not enough seating in the underneath tent, so that's something that we're all looking forward to adding for next year, is possibly moving some of the technicals from the athletic fields to allow our families to have additional space. But other than that, it was nothing but positive reviews and again, thanking all the volunteers making that event as wonderful as it was. Some other events that are coming up for Recford on top of the dinner dance and the annual golf outing. October thirtieth is our Trumpet Tree, and that's going to be held at Auburn Elementary in the parking lot. That timeframe is from three to five. You're going to decorate your trunk, come up at two o'clock, and it's also a great time and really good vibe. The other thing that we're having is on November twelfth, it's a murder mystery dinner theater. We hire a company called Without a Cue Productions. It's no theme just yet, but they're still working on it, but that will also require a registration, so more information is coming for that. And then we also have our very, very busy day on December fifth, where we have the annual senior luncheon at one o'clock, as well as our annual tree lighting ceremony at six, and there's also the gingerbread event at six thirty. So please keep an eye out for all the Rec Fund, Recford Fund, and we do have a meeting coming up on ten-twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-one. Looking into the future with the Rec Fund, we do have some summer concert series. The first one we're trying to do is on Memorial Day weekend, which is May, Saturday, May twenty-eighth, and we're trying to try to do a chili cook-off and have a band as well. So more information for that, as well as some of the other concert series that will be coming down the line there, so.
Thank you, Mrs. Heller. Mr. Tanyan, sir?
Thank you, Mr. President. That's sealed on the agenda. We got resolution for Greenways Municipal Grant Program. I believe it was already done, but just in case, it wasn't asked council to approve the submission of a grant application to the Delaware County Open Space and Greenways Municipal Grant Program for the Samson Park Project.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'm going to submit our private report for the month of help things I do want to go over is the Popeyes. We reviewed and approved an escrow, an estimate for, slight escrow, we said at two hundred seventy-nine thousand one hundred sixty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents, plus thirteen thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars for inspections. For the Edmont Avenue site improvements, thirty-five thousand twelve dollars and fifty-six cents, plus one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars for inspections. And the Edmont Avenue wall site improvements for eight thousand seven hundred eighty-six dollars and forty-two cents, plus four hundred and fifty dollars for inspection.
So we make the motion?
Who wants it?
I'll second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any questions? Motion carries?
I want to report the Delcora ESA diversion. What this is, it's a Act five thirty-seven plan, which is a sewage facilities planning document. Delcora has an agreement with the city of Philadelphia that treats sewage from a portion of Delaware County. That agreement is set to expire in twenty-twenty-eight. The plan that's submitted is basically looking at alternatives to the Philadelphia option. I think it has four options to it. This plan is open for general public comment up until October seventh, and those comments can be directed directly to Delcora, get that information off their website. But as far as the borough is concerned, it hasn't already been done, so Planning Commission needs to review this plan and submit comments on that within, I think, sixty days, which is going to expire by the end of October.
Charles, I'll suggest the Planning Commission review that revised Act five thirty-seven plan at its October nineteenth meeting, assuming you can get some documentation over the, over to the Planning Commission meetings prior there to the members, so that they are up to speed on what they will be reviewing through the October nineteenth meeting, but certainly Mr. Wilber can put that on the agenda. I know we have broken storage on the agenda for October nineteenth, and we can certainly review the revised Act five thirty-seven plan, again, assuming we can get some documents over to the Planning Commission members ahead of time.
I will just mention that. We received one maybe a year ago where Delcora was planning to sell its assets to Aqua. There's a definitely deal with that. This is kind of a separate freestanding planning document that really reflects that contract in Philadelphia that's set to expire. Other activities, Councilman Vaskis mentioned there was a thirty-four twenty-four Victor Avenue, it's a property to street ladder, we get for all the bits to repair that street ladder.
Who wants the motion? I'll take it. All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Motion carries.
The Edmont Avenue sanitary sewer rehabilitation, this is a project to reline the sanitary store foot from eight blocks over Haven Road. We received bids for that project, received free bids ranging from forty thousand seven hundred twenty-nine dollars to sixty-eight thousand eight hundred and sixty-one dollars. I recommend award to the low bidder, which is mobile dragging and video bike, and a low bid amount of forty thousand seven hundred twenty-nine dollars.
Who wants the motion?
I'll take the motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any questions or any opposed? Motion carries.
The street sanitary and stone store maintenance contracts, the borough has a current contract that's set to expire December thirty-first of this year. These contracts have an optional one-year renewal. The street maintenance contractor is currently held by Moore Construction. Their increase for twenty-twenty-two is seven percent increase. I'm going to recommend that we accept, accept this optional renewal, basically because it sounds like a lot of money, but we really don't need this contract a lot. I think we may, maybe should, once or twice a year, but it was under a thousand dollars, so it's, the increase is, it's not worth putting it out for a day again. And then the, one of these separately again, I'll go with the other.
Okay.
And then the second one is sanitary and stone store maintenance, this is currently ADU Services, their price for twenty-twenty-two will remain the same. So I recommend that we extend those contracts.
Okay. Motion?
Okay, separate motion?
Or are we issuing all of them?
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, separate for...
Who's separate? For the purposes of clarity.
Okay, Charles.
I'll make the motions.
Okay. We don't need him to reread them. Okay. Motion for the first contract company, Moore.
Moore Construction. And a one.
Okay, we'll do the motion referring to the, the company Moore in Mr. Tanyan's report. Do I have a motion? Judge took the motion. We have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or questions? Motion carries. Second company was?
ADU Services for sanitary and stone store maintenance.
Who wants the motion? Ms. Wiki takes the motion as a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any questions or, motion carries?
And finally, we have a project to renovate the police station pantries. We're going to seek authorization to advertise that project for bid.
Motion?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I don't think anyone would oppose that, is the motion carries.
Do the officers have to...
I have one, I have a question about the Greenways grant at Samson Park. Are we able to move that, the location, multi-purpose facility as part of that grant? Should the grant be awarded?
Should the grant be awarded? There's no restriction on the grant access location.
Okay, good, so it could...
I beg your pardon.
Okay, so it could be, okay, all right. More on, more on that later, that's what I should, I meant to say in the email, I completely forgot. Is that all you have, sir?
Yes, I do.
Mr. Leslie is assisting with Hazmetz Bill in Chester Township. Mr. Gavin is not present. Brings us to the second public discussion session. Anyone for public discussion not named Tom Dykes?
Everybody else? Nobody else?
Come on up, state, name and address of the representative.
Tom Lanks, three of five, Dr. Gabriel. On behalf of the Recreation Board, Family Day Board Committee, would love to thank police, the fire, Public Works, council, all of our volunteers, the high school honor society students who came out, and all of the public who came to Family Day. Between the public and all of our vendors and people who are helping out, we had over eighteen hundred people come out, which was a fantastic day. Using the walking trail board gave us a lot more space. It didn't feel as crowded as we normally were, bumping into people, so it was kind of fun that way. Heard lots of good comments from everyone, lots, lots of fun. If you have any ideas or any things that you think we need to add into Family Day, please let us know. I'm tying on to that. That's number one. Number two, chief, a gauntlet has been thrown down by one of our Rec Port people. Then they will supply a trophy that can be shuffled back and forth between the police and the fire company. Who wins the ball more? So if you can get enough guys to play, they've got a trophy that you guys can shuffle back and forth. To doing that. The concert is this Friday night. Lots of fun. The Dylan McGuire Band is doing original songs, pop songs, Irish songs, some oldies, just some lots of fun. Really good band, so if you come out and come and do it. Supplying dinner is part of the whole thing, so there's roast beef sandwiches, meatball sandwiches. So if you want to come on out and have fun, it's really an inexpensive night, twenty-five dollars for two people, not bad at all.
Do you have the... Silence? No.
No, silence, just one, again, silence are during the day, and then also from now through Thursday, from six to eight here at the hall. Trying to limit the door, limit the door sales if you can. And for once again, thank you to Charles and Terry from the C V, to the church. It was amazing that...
It was great, great day.
And thank you all. Thank you all very much, and thank you to all the residents of O'Gale.
Thank you, sir. Are there two ladies named Marie and Betsy from Hills of Rose Valley present? Would you like to speak?
Sure.
Sure, come on up. Are you Betsy?
I am.
I'm Terry Allen.
I'm Betsy Usecman, I'm there with Marie Zarzaka. We're on the board of the Hills of Rose Valley.
Sure, and you have, you have a question about the outlet bike that's...
Yeah, we wanted to thank you for your commitment to repair this.
Sure.
It's gotten much worse over the last four years, as you know. I assume you probably discussed it at your last meeting?
No, we did not.
You have?
No. The original email you sent me, I don't know, six weeks ago, whatever, the first I've ever seen, I searched my email for everything, I couldn't find any previous council to determine everything.
We, we have some.
Yeah. You forwarded me a lot of the correspondence, but I, I absolutely know it. So the question will be for Mr. Tanyan, when we could start, correct?
Pardon?
Your question will be for our engineers, to when we could start the repair. Your question will be for our engineers, to when we could start the repair.
Yeah, I guess. We just would like to know whether it's?
Is that a wish list item? That is a wish list item, okay. We, 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 we've been talking about, we, we had, we had, we were on the emails, we have an outlet bike at Ridley Creek. Right across from the Mills of Rose Valley, yes. Yes, it's our property. And Charles, what exactly is happening, I saw the picture, it's basically eroding away the tree.
There's a stormstorm, discharred, an asphalt bike.
And it's, it's creating erosion.
It's actually, it's actually missing, like, just in the park.
What's a ballpark cost on a repair? And I mean very ballpark, they're fresh, they're a little stressed.
The difficult part is getting there. Come down in the man, through the woods to get there, so getting it put there is our majority of the cost, and you're looking at excess of fifty thousand dollars.
There's a lot of, oh, you're in the middle of it. I was thinking around ten thousand.
It is on, it is on the budget wishlist that I've been putting in at Public Works.
Okay. Motion to adjourn? That means we wish we could do it anytime, but we're not sure when, that's what I'm going to do there. That's the best thing I can give you.
Because I mean, it's just going to get worse, because there's a huge sinkhole there now, and we have to put signs up. It's for love kids, take that path down, and even though we have no trespassing, you know, kids, you know, want to go down there. So, we obviously can't afford it, that's it, it's on, it's on our land trust. But as the tenure is just going to get larger and larger. When we first noticed it, which was in?
2017.
Thank you for remembering, you know, it was only maybe separated by six to nine inches. Of course now, it's just, because of all the water and trees that have gone down in it, so we were just wondering, you know.
Well, yeah, I'm planning to floor it at the cost, I thought it would be part of that, but. It's going to require further discussion with the council.
Are they, is there any paperwork combined, if there's any contracts or any, anything written? Well, you have an adhesive onto this, to run store water. I guess we, the trust that we own is separated by, or it's, your side of Ridley Creek is Hook Haven, obviously ours is. But we're, you know, we have, we own the trust, so that's where the sinkhole is, that's coming from, store water, we're all from Hook Haven.
Okay.
I don't think, I don't think it's hard to get down to the spot. It's right, we're almost next to the pipeline where you get down, so the pipeline people keep that pathway kind of trimmed. In the summer, it tends to grow up to thousands of times, so it's, it's just all over.
Do you know that is accurate?
Dave Evans and I are trying to have a hill that was basically inaccessible.
Is that right?
But if we did walk anchor, if we made it out there, you have a bridge that crosses the creek there someplace. You have a bridge that crosses the creek someplace over there, right? You see, old wooden bridges, it's still there, it's still functioning?
Yes. Well, you can get to it from, on Cambridge Road very easily. Do you know where the, the pipeline goes, where the big, I'm trying to think of the two houses on it.
Yeah, discuss it after the meeting, we'll, we'll, we'll.
When I was there, this, this site was currently safe off, there was armed safety fence around, I'm not sure that's still off.
Yeah, we had an armed safety fence.
There was armed safety fence around, so no accident.
All right.
Thank you.
Keep in touch, have any, you know, we'll, we'll work on it and talk to Mr. Catanja after the meeting. Sir, anyone else for public discussion? Public discussion is closed with that, is there anything else from council or?
Just one, one brief thing, in terms of transparency, the budget committee didn't meet only 20th, and 6:30. The topic was the budget.
That it, sir, that's all? With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn. I'll take it.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Gary? Good evening, everyone.